Daniel, Chapter 7. And so, you know, just say that I have really enjoyed the Bible studies with Brother Mark. He asked me to fill in with him tonight and suggested that I do something on the book of Daniel. And you know, Daniel is sort of a background study to the book of Revelation. Now, the last time I shared with you, what I did is I went over some comparisons or parallels to the book of Daniel and the book of Revelation, and then a lot of them. Both of those books are apocalyptic books, we call them, and the word apocalyto means to reveal, to unveil. And so, both Revelation and Daniel unveil Christ, they reveal Christ, but they also reveal the future as well. So, they unveil the future and unveil Christ. And so, we said that both of them are apocalyptic books. They were both written during a time of crisis, you know, with the Apostle John being persecuted by the evil Emperor Domitian, and so, just a very dangerous time, and the Apostle John is, he has been exiled after this devil's island called Patras. During Daniel's time, the nation of Israel had been destroyed, and the people had been taken into captivity, and so, Israel didn't exist. What's going to happen to God's people and all this? So, it was a time of crisis for Daniel as well. Both Daniel and the Apostle John, who said, live in foreign countries. So, neither one of them were living in Israel when they wrote this book. I also talked to you briefly about an evil ruler who is going to come at the end of the age. Now, both Daniel and Revelation reveal much about this individual. But what happened, I had that at the end of what I was doing, and I sort of ran out of time. And I think I had about five or 10 minutes where I just kind of rushed through that part. So, what I want to do tonight is to talk to you a bit more about what Daniel tells us about this evil future, a future king. Now, Brother Mark is going to be talking to you quite a bit more about this person when you get to Revelation, Chapter 13, all the way through Revelation 19. But I thought it might be good for you to see the background about this person from the book of Daniel, because of course, Daniel was written first, and really, if you want to understand the book of Revelation, it helps you to understand the book, the book of Daniel. A lot of, you know, images and so forth that you see in the book of Revelation also come from the book, the book of Daniel. Now, the book of Daniel, just to give you a quick overview, is divided into two parts. Chapters 1 through 6 of Daniel are the historical accounts in the book. You know, you've got the fiery furnace, you've got Daniel and the lion's den, you've got the hand lighting on the wall and those stories. And I think that most of you, probably all of you, don't know these stories, and they're very familiar, and it's great stuff, great stuff in chapters 1 through 6. Chapter 7 through 12 of the book of Daniel, and that's what we're going to concentrate on tonight, but chapters 7 through 12 of Daniel deals with four visions, and this, this part of Daniel is really the eschatological or end times part of the book of Daniel. And primarily, we see that in these visions in chapter 7 through 12. We see a little bit in chapter 2, but primarily, chapter 7 through 12. Now, all four of these visions in Daniel's chapter 7 through 12 are going to deal in some way with this evil person, and this evil person is this king who's going to come. And so, tonight, what I want to do is share with you a brief overview, and obviously, we could take an evening on every chapter and more, but I don't have that much time. And so, tonight, I want to give you a brief overview of what God reveals about this evil person in chapters 7 through 12. Now, the last half of the book of Daniel again focuses on two evil persons, actually, two villains, not just one. There used to be a television program on the Investigation Discovery Channel, and the program was called Most Evil. And in Most Evil, there was a forensic scientist who put a grid together, his name was, he was a psychiatrist named Michael Stone, Dr. Michael Stone, and he would examine criminals and their crimes, and he rated each criminal according to a grid that he created. And the grid decoded a killer's motive, method, or mindset. And then, Dr. Stone classified the criminal according to his evil grid, his most evil grid, to determine how he rated on the most evil scale. If the criminal killed their mother, you know, they'd go up pretty high. If they killed a stranger, they weren't, they didn't rate funny. It's high, though, it's still terrible. The most evil scale. Now, there are two most evil persons in Daniel chapters 7 through 12. Now, who are these two most evil persons in these chapters? Well, they're two of the most evil persons who have ever lived, and one of them is the most evil person who will ever live in all of human history. So, who are these, these people? Well, let's move here first, most evil number two. Number two, here's, I'm going to start with the most evil person in Daniel 7 through 12, number two. In chapter 8 of Daniel, in chapter 11, 21 through 35, Daniel predicted 400 years in advance, one of the most wicked people who would ever live in history. It would be, that's like someone predicting in 1600, minute events of things that take place and persons in 2023. So, it's an amazing prophecy. Now, who is this person? Well, probably, a few of you today have heard of him, and most people haven't heard of him. His name is Antiochus the Fourth. And so, we see this guy right here, you see the red dot, but Antiochus the Fourth, he was a Greek king who ruled from 175 to 163 B.C. Daniel 8:32 says, in the latter period of Greek rule, a king will arise, so he's a Greek king. He says in verses 24 and 25 that this king will massacre the holy people and oppose the prince of princes, that is, he will oppose the true, the true God. In Daniel 11, 21 through 35, Daniel fills in more details about this particular evil person. Now, what do you do? From 175 to 164, this tyrant waged war on God's people, the Jewish people. He massacred over 40,000 men, women, and children, sold 40,000 war into slavery, took the mothers, circumcised their babies. For that crime, he killed the babies, hung them around their necks, the mother's necks, paraded them through the streets of Jerusalem, and threw them off the city wall to their death. What a guy. He burned people for observing the Sabbath. So, if you went to church on a Sabbath day, then the death penalty. He tortured a woman and her seven sons to death because they wouldn't renounce their faith in Christ who served his Greek gods. This is mentioned in Hebrews 11, by the way. He also executed people for having a copy of the scriptures, and he died mysteriously in 163 B.C., after he was over crawling there from Jerusalem, and Daniel says, he will be broken without human agency. Now, why would God inspire the prophet Daniel to warn the Jewish people about this Greek king? Why would he do that? Because Antiochus the Fourth was one of the most serious threats to God's people in all of history, maybe the most serious threat to the Jewish people before the time of Christ. Not just because he persecuted and killed believers, but because he, he attempted to exterminate the Jewish religion. Antiochus wasn't content to live and let live. You worship Zeus and his Greek gods, or you die. And so, that's what he was trying to impose on the Jewish people. Now, why was that so serious? Because if the true biblical religion was eradicated, there would be no believers and no Messiah. The messianic line would come to an end. And so, no Messiah means no Savior for the human race. That means we would all go to hell because we wouldn't have a Savior, and so, he was so evil, he's been called the Old Testament Antichrist. So, that's, that's what Daniel predicts, and he predicts it to warn the Jewish people about their great tribulation that they would, they would face in the second century. Well, someone who would massacre men, women, children, kill little babies, do all of these things, they would rank pretty high on Dr. Stone's, you know, most evil grid. And by the way, the deliverance of the Jewish people from Antiochus is celebrated every December, it's called Hanukkah. Hanukkah means dedication, they rededicated the temple after he had desecrated. And this holiday, the Jews celebrate while we're celebrating Christmas, it's called Hanukkah, also it's called the Feast of Wives. So, Antiochus is most evil number two in Daniel 7 through 12. You say, wow, who could be more evil than that? Well, there is, and by the way, this is a picture, this is a coin from his time, and so, he is, that's what he looked like. He doesn't look, he doesn't look that bad, does he? You know? And of course, the future evil ruler may be a rock star, who knows? He may be really good looking, but that's, that's the Old Testament Antichrist on the back of that coin, that's from his time, that back of that coin is his Greek gods. And he's holding, as I remember in his hand, the little god, Mitya, victory, the god of victory, who wears Nike tennis shoes, who wears victory tennis shoes, but at the, you know, that's, that's his fellow. But there's someone more evil than him, and so, this is most evil number one in Daniel's chapter 7 through 12, and in fact, the most evil person who will ever live in all of history. And so, now we're coming to the sheets, and what's on, what's on the sheet now. Antiochus was a monster, but the second villain will be far worse. He is going to be, as I said, the world's most evil person in all of human history. Satan himself will energize this man. Satan himself will apparently absolutely indwell this person. You know, in scripture, there's only one other person that the Bible says that Satan entered. You know, Brother Mark was talking a few weeks ago, saying, you know, not many of us are important enough to get Satan's attention, you know? We're just getting average demon, you know, to oppress us, you know? But, 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 but the scripture says that on the night before, that Jesus was, of course, betrayed, that it says that Satan entered into Jesus. He actually entered into him. Well, that's frightening, isn't it? Well, here's a person who Satan is, is mostly, well, actually indwells. Well, that's, that's really, that's really frightening. And so, he is going to be a scary person. He's known by many names, the beast, a little horn, the lawless one, man of sin, but his most famous name is the Antichrist. He's spoken of in Daniel chapter 7, Daniel chapter 8 either directly or by type, he's spoken of specifically in Daniel chapter 9, and Daniel chapter 11, and Daniel chapter 12. And there have been many evil tyrants throughout history, you know, the Egyptian Pharaoh, and the Babylonians, the Persians mistreated the Jewish people, all of this, the Romans did, and all, and all in modern times. Hitler killed 6 million Jews, many Christians, Joseph Stalin, communist Chinese Mao murdered tens and tens and tens of babies, people probably don't know how many. But someday, the most evil ruler will come, and he is going to make the deeds of Adolf Hitler and Stalin and Mao, he's going to make those look pale in comparison to the things that he's going to do. Now, just two or three weeks ago, we looked at Revelation, chapter 6 in here, and we saw some martyrs under the altar. They had been martyred for their faith, and they were crying out to God for justice, and God said, I'm going, I'm going to bring justice, but just wait a little while. Well, who's the one who martyred them? This guy did it. He's the one who did it. And then, two or three weeks ago, we looked at Revelation 7, and in Revelation 7, we see, the scripture says that there was a number of people so great that they couldn't be counted, from all nations and all languages. And John asked someone there, said, who are all these people? And they're heaven. He said, who are all these people? And he said, these are the people who came out of not great tribulation, but the great tribulation. The, what, we're studying here Revelation 6 through 19, that's the great tribulation, that his judgment's being poured out as the seals on his scroll are opened up. So, but why are they there? It says they were there, they're dead, they're in heaven, why are they there? It said they're there because of their faith in Jesus Christ. Who is the one who martyred all these people? That guy right there, the Antichrist. So, Daniel and Revelation tell us a lot about this evil person. Now, I think that as we study the book of Revelation, particularly as we get to 13 through 19 and so forth, that this background here in Daniel will be helpful too. Okay, now let's look at the sheets, okay? And by the way, there's a hero in going from chapter 7 to 12, often in the Bible, his name is Jesus Christ, and he is coming to deliver us, praise the Lord for that. Okay. Now, I want you to see first, the, the Antichrist origin. Now, where is this guy going to come from? Does he just appear out of thin air? He comes, he comes from somewhere. The scripture says in Daniel 7, verses 2 through 3, "In my vision at night, I looked, and there before me were the four winds of heaven, churning up the great sea. Four great seas, each different from the others, came up out of the sea." So, we see Antichrist origin, and he's going to come from the sea. Now, how does Antichrist come to power? He comes from the sea. What, what is the sea? Well, we don't have to guess. The angel tells us in Daniel 7:17 that the sea is a symbol of the earth. Four beasts come out from the sea, and the angel specifically interprets these four beasts to be four kingdoms of world empires who will come out of the earth. So, the beasts are empires that come upon the, that come, come out of the sea, and the sea represents the earth. Now, notice that the sea is troubled, is being churned up by the four winds of heaven. And so, Daniel is describing a troubled sea, a raging sea, and four winds means all points of the compass. So, what we're seeing here is not something locally, this is a global event. The, the meaning is that the world's nations will be in chaos, and this is an apt picture of a lost world, our world today. Isaiah says, "But the wicked are like the troubled sea. When it cannot rest, whose waters cast up mud and dirt, there is no peace," says my God, for the wicked. Now, out of the chaos of the nations will come the Antichrist. He's going to come to power, he's going to deceive the world, he's going to come promising peace, he's going to promise prosperity, he's going to promise safety, but what he's going to bring to the world is poverty, war, destruction, and death. And the Apostle Paul says, when they say peace and safety, that's when sudden destruction is going to come upon them. So, dictators usually rise to power in chaotic times. This is how Hitler came to power, Stalin came to power, Mao came to power, and they came to power in times of crisis. This is how totalitarian governments can take on during times of crisis. Again, Hitler rose to power during the Great Depression in Germany. Before the Depression, the Nazis played a different role to that part, I mean, they did miserably. But after the Depression, then, you know, the German party, the Nazi party began to pick up hopes, and Hitler then was voting his way into power, and the German Reich started in 1933, the Congress actually voted to install him as their chancellor and gave him in the Enabling Act, emergency powers, which essentially were the powers of a dictator. Why did they do it? Because they said, we need you to save Germany, we need you to save our world. And so, they gave in all those powers, what Hitler did, he destroyed Germany, he didn't save it, he destroyed it. And so, this is what the Antichrist is going to do. He's going to come in several facets, out of the chaos of the nations, Antichrist will come to power, bringing a false message of hope, he'll be a master deceiver. And then, he's going to come also, oh, by the way, here's a picture, a raging sea, and then, he's going to come from the fourth beast. Now, the four, these four beasts that come out of the sea represent nations, that's what the angel said, they represent kingdoms, empires that come, and they're world empires, not just local nations, but empires that rule the world. The conservative scholars interpret these consistently as Babylon, that would be the world power when Daniel was living. The next empire was Middle Persia, the next was Greece, and the next beast represented Rome. Antichrist empire, represented by the tin horns and the little horn, is part of that fourth beast, and that fourth beast, of course, is Antichrist. Thus, the Antichrist will come from a last day phase of the fourth empire, which is Rome. Now, I sketched this out this afternoon for you, it's with a picture, but here's a picture of these, these beasts, you can see that. And so, you have the lion with eagle's wings, that is symbol of Babylon, you have the bear, which is the empire that conquered Babylon, the ill Persian under Cyrus the Great, and then over to your right is a leopard with four heads and wings, that was Greece that conquered Persia. Again, if you just look in a history book, this is what you see, and this is what Daniel shared with us. It's very interesting when you look at that leopard, because a leopard is a swift animal, he has wings, it makes him even swifter, and that, of course, is a picture of Alexander the Great and the swift conquest he made, he conquered the world, you know, about 10 years, it was, it was all over, he was a swift conqueror. And what's interesting too is that leopard that Daniel describes hundreds of years before heaven has four heads. Now, four, why would four heads be on this leopard that symbolized Greece? Because when Alexander the Great died, the Greek empire was divided into four parts by his generals, and so, it was a four-part empire. And so, that's an amazing little detail, hundreds of years in advance, and then, that last empire represents Rome, and we don't know what it looked like, Daniel said it was indescribable. I've never seen anything like it, but you see the horns on top of it, which represent the Antichrist and his empire. So, the Antichrist is going to come from Rome, from the sea, and then from Rome. All right, then the second thing that we see here, third thing, the second thing is, this empire is going to be an end times empire, it's going to be an end times ruler. So, the Antichrist is going to come to power in the last days. Now, how do we know this? We know this because he is going to be destroyed by Christ, as Christ returns. Daniel chapter 7 and verse 13, and hopefully, you'll read all of this when you get home, but Daniel 7:13 says this, "I was watching in the night heathens, and behold, one watched the Son of Man coming with the clouds of heaven. He came through the ancient days, and they brought him near to him." This is one coming, the Son of Man coming on the clouds of heaven is a prophecy of the Lord Jesus Christ coming at his second coming, and when he comes at his second coming, he is going to destroy this particular evil king, he's going to destroy the Antichrist. Now, you say, how do you know that Daniel chapter 7:13 speaks of Christ? How do you know the Son of Man is Christ? Well, of course, that was a title for the Messiah in the New Testament, but I also know it because Jesus said so. In Matthew chapter 26 and verse 64, "The high priest, the knight, he was crying, put him on oath, and he said, I'm putting you on oath, arm you, the Messiah. And Jesus said, I am. And he said, you will see the Son of Man coming in the clouds of glory, sitting at the right hand of power." Jesus quoted this verse and said, that's me, and it's me coming at my second coming to judge this world and rule this world. And so, Jesus Christ said, this is, this is, this is he, at his second coming, and he's coming and will judge this evil person and his empire when he comes, in Daniel chapter 7. Also, Antichrist wars occur at the end of time, according to 11:40, and the resurrection of the saints take place at the end of this evil person's reign, according to Daniel chapter 12 and verse 2. In the New Testament, the scripture says in 2 Thessalonians 2:8, that verse, "And then the lawless one will be revealed, whom the Lord will consume with the breath of his mouth and destroy with the brightness of his coming," and also Revelation 19:20, as well says that Christ will destroy. Now, so, he is an eschatological ruler, he is an end times ruler. I'm third, and I am watching clock back there, it's ticking away, but he is an evil ruler. So, he's an evil ruler, and he's going to do some, commit some evil actions, some evil acts. The first thing he's going to do is blaspheme God. And there are a number of passages, let's see here, in Daniel 11:36, it says, "The king will do as he pleases, and he will exalt and magnify himself above every God." And he goes on to say that he will say monstrous things against the God of God. But we see that he blasphemes God here, we see in 2 Thessalonians 2, verses 3 through 4, that he is going to oppose and exalt himself above all that is called God or that is worship, so that he as God sits in the temple of God, showing himself that he is God. And in Revelation 13:5 through 6, Brother Mark will be pointing this out to you, it says, "He opened his mouth in blasphemy against God, to blaspheme his name as tabernacle, and those can have it." So, he blasphemes God, and then, he's going to persecute the saints. And we have a verse up here, hopefully, you can read that, where it says, "The saints will be handed over to him for a time, a time, and a half a time." And it says, this lion was waging war against the saints and defeating them. So, he's going to persecute believers. And then, we see, we see that And then we see, we see that in Revelation. And then it's third, he is going to stop religious worship and practices, and he does this in the middle of the seven-year tribulation period, which we've been looking at, will seal judgments in the book of Revelation. And the verse, Daniel chapter nine and verse twenty-seven, says, "And he, that is the Antichrist, will make a firm covenant with the many, with Israel, for one week, that is a week of years. But in the middle of the week, he will put a stop to sacrifice and glade off." So he's going to have a total reign of seven years. In the middle of that period, he is going to shepherd it down and begin his persecution in full force. And then we see he has an evil character. Daniel eleven thirty-six through thirty-eight, here's some excerpts, "He will exalt and magnify himself above every god." And he goes on to emphasize the fact that he will regard, will not regard any god, he is a, he is an absolute militant atheist, a neoatheist. He will honor a god of four, because his god will be militant power, it says in that text. And he will magnify himself, he has filled the prime like Satan himself. All right, now his wars, uh, in chapters thirty-nine through forty-five of chapter eleven of Daniel, it talks about his wars. He's going to, uh, to, to have a lust for power, his god will be military mind, and so he's gonna use that military mind to conquer, to conquer nations. And Daniel eleven thirty-nine through forty-five describes it. He's going to attack many nations, and then he's gonna have a final conflict at the end, and that con, conflict is going to end with his defeat. And we know from the book of Revelation, it will take place at the battle, the Battle of Armageddon, it will take place there at Megiddo. And then we see his reign, the most evil. So he's the most evil person who ever lived. His reign is gonna be the most evil period of history in the history of the world. In Daniel chapter twelve, and I think I have that verse up here for you, can you see it? It says, "At that time Michael shall stand up to great friends, and stands watch over the sons of your people, and theirs shall be a time of trouble." It's during his reign, such, and what we're seeing in Revelation, describing that, "Such has never was since there was a nation, even to that time, and at that time your people will be delivered." Jesus Christ quotes this passage, refers to this passage in Matthew chapter twenty-four, verses twenty-one through twenty-two, and Jesus said, "For then there will be great tribulation." And he's referring to Daniel chapter twelve and verse one. He said, "There will be great tribulation, such has not been since the beginning of the world until this time; no, nor ever shall be, that is, again. And unless those days were shortened, no flesh should be saved, but for the elect sake, those days will be shortened." In other words, things are gonna get so, so terrible, that unless Christ comes and rescues us, no one will survive. And that's what Jesus quote. And then a limited ruler. The Scripture says in Daniel chapter nine, verse twenty-seven, that his reign will last one week. Now, that's a week of years. The Jewish people knew about two kinds of weeks. They had a week of days, and every week of days, they had a Sabbath day. And they also knew about weeks of years, and every seventh year, they had a Sabbath year. So they had weeks of days, weeks of years. Daniel's speaking to a Jewish, Jewish audience, and so no one takes that as a week of days, but Daniel's speaking to a Jewish audience who understood the thought of a week of years. And so this persecution, this total reign of this evil person, is going to last one week of years, that is, seven years. This total reign, seven years, the last half is what we call the great tribulation, and that's when his persecution begins in earnest, and he completely stops all forms of worship. And then we see that he has a limited, um, a limited ruler, praise the Lord, just seven years. And then the purpose of Antichrist, why would God allow this person to, to exist? Well, he has a purpose. First, his purpose is to, in fact, to purify the nation of Israel. Daniel twelve ten says, "Many shall be purified," that is, under this terrible time during his reign, "many shall be purified, made white and refined, but the wicked shall be wicked, and none of the wicked shall understand, but the wise shall understand." God is going to use his time to bring good people one last chance to come across. It's, it's a warning from him. And, uh, during this period, this reign of Antichrist, during the tribulation, the Jewish people are going to finally see that Jesus Christ is their Messiah, and toward the end of that, they're going to turn as a nation to Christ and be saved. Zechariah twelve ten talks about that, the Apostle Paul mentions that as well. But the second purpose of this, of the Antichrist is God's judgment on an unbelieving world. You know, when Daniel comes and speaks of the Lord coming and judging, he's coming to judge those who reject Christ. In, in Revelation, now we saw just the other day with Brother Mark sharing, it said, "Yet they repented not." All of these things are being poured out on planet Earth, anybody with any sense should repent, but they don't repent. And so since people don't repent, judgment comes, and Antichrist is one of, of the judgments of God on planet Earth. As a matter of fact, you'll see later on, he is the person who is going to lead the world to Armageddon, and that final battle that Jesus is gonna come and stop. And then the Apostle Paul says in Second Thessalonians two, "The coming of the Lawless One is according to the working of Satan," so that's the same person, "according to the working of Satan with all power, signs, and lying wonders." It's gonna be pretty scary, amazing. "And with all unguarnish deception among those who perished, because they did not receive the love of the truth." So why are people judged? Because they did not receive the love of the truth. They could have received the love of the truth. Even in the tribulation, whether the church is here or not, there'll be people who'll be saved, and they'll be saved, because a hundred and forty-four thousand are gonna be sharing, the two witnesses are gonna be sharing, the word of God will still be here, all of, they still have a witness, God is gonna do some amazing things to get the word to them. But it says, "They did not receive the love of the truth," that they might be saved. And for this reason, God will send them strong delusion, and delusion is Antichrist, that they should believe the lie, that they will all be condemned, that they will all be condemned, may be condemned, who did not believe the truth but had pleasure in unlikeness. And then we see that he is a doomed ruler. It says, "But the poor consent, and his power will be taken away and completely destroyed." And there are many verses about that. We've already seen in Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verse eight, he's gonna be destroyed by the brightness of Christ's coming. And in Revelation nineteen twenty, it says, "Christ is gonna come, and he is going to, uh, to, to judge this person and the false prophet, and throw them into the light of fire." And then the, later we judge, and then the last thing, here are those verses, uh, that the deliverance from Antichrist is their home in the face of Antichrist. I mean, he's so powerful. In Revelation, it says, "Who is like the beast, and who is able to make war with him?" That's why people follow, because they're afraid of him, he's so powerful. And so who can make war with him? Who can defeat him? Well, Jesus can. And when Jesus comes, the Scripture says, he just speaks the word, he's gone, he is judged, just like that. And in Revelation chapter twelve, uh, it says, "But at that time your people, everyone whose name is found written in the book, will be delivered." So Christ is gonna come, he is gonna set up his wonderful kingdom, and we're all going to be part of that. Now Daniel, at this time, was about eighty-something years old, you know, he was getting on up there in years. And so Daniel knew, he didn't have much time left, uh, you know, here on the earth, and he wants to know more about what's gonna happen, what the Lord says to Daniel, right here, as for you, Daniel, go on your way to the end, that is, the end of your life. You will rest, that is, you're gonna die, your body's gonna rest, you're gonna go to heaven, your body's gonna rest. And then at the end of days, uh, you will rise, as you're gonna be resurrected to receive your lot of inheritance. And so Dan, you said, "Daniel, no, or this wonderful kingdom I'm describing, you're gonna be part of it, and you're gonna have treasure in it, it's gonna be a wonderful thing." And so I would just say, whether in your natural body or whether in your resurrected body, you're gonna be part of this wonderful new world when the Lord comes. Now, you know, I would just say this in closing, I've studied all this, well, some of the prophecies Daniel, uh, shared are already fulfilled. For example, Daniel says that Israel will be in the land of Christ's return, that's what he said, Israel's ready. Well, Israel's already there, after two thousand years almost, Israel was scattered around, just Jews around the world. Nineteen forty-eight, they came back, so they're in the land. And then, of course, a second thing, Antichrist empire is formed. It will be a reconstituted Roman empire the last day. The peoples and nations that made up the ancient Roman empire will come back to life. That's why it's called a revived Roman empire. They'll come back to life, and those nations that made up the old Roman empire were the nations of Europe. That empire's formed, Europe has come together as an empire. They have their parliament, they have their judiciary, they have their currency, they're looking for a leader, and I believe that, uh, it's gonna come, and it will be the Antichrist. And then, uh, we'll skip through that. Uh, but this, is the Antichrist alive and well? Well, you know, um, I think he is. I believe that we're close enough to Christ's return, that this, this evil person is alive and well, and just simply waiting to step forward and to carry out his, his part on the world, the world stage. Our world is, is in a chaotic condition, and things could go south very quickly. What could trigger the world conditions that could bring him to power? It could be a global economic collapse, it could be a war, it could be a preternual rapture, some believe in that, I believe in that. And so if all the Christians were taken out, there are about ninety million in North America, Pharaoh taken out, I think that the US would collapse frequently, and, uh, it would be chaos all around the world, and that could lead to his coming. Okay, it was six thirty-two, so I went two minutes over, but that's not too bad, because I've got a lot of stuff. All right, well, it's good to see all of you, let's pray. Father, we love you, give us a great day, thank you for the book of Daniel, and thank you that, uh, that Lord, we know that you are coming, and there's a wonderful future for all of us who know you, and help us to be faithful and shaven, that wonderful good news with everyone who knows you. And we pray this in Jesus' name and fore-sake. Amen. God bless you.